I'd like to call this meeting of the Finance Committee to order, please. And we have a quorum. All committee members are present. And Ms. Duffield and Ms. Dodson's available for us. I have no chairman's report of anything of any consequence to offer as far as this meeting's concerned. So what we'll do first is move to public comments. So it's any comment on items or issues outside those that are listed on the agenda today. And I don't see any hands raised. Ms. Dodson, do you have any written requests?
I do not have any public comment at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Then what we'll do is go ahead and move on to our consent agenda, which is consideration and approval of two sets of meeting minutes, the June 4th meeting and then our special meeting on the 29th also. Are there any comments? Changes, requests? Then I'll consider a motion for approval of consent agenda item. Do I hear one?
I move that Mary Maher did a really great job writing those minutes and we should accept them as written.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Marvin. All right, moved and seconded. And may I buy a show of hands? Voting for yay. All right, passed 5-0. Move on to regular business. And move to item A, which is the discussion regarding future delays of the rate implementation based on current environment. And this is a follow-up item from the discussion that was originally held at the time about delaying implementation of the additional rate implementations. Out by one quarter was the final resolution. But part of that was that we would again take this up as we got a little further down line. So first, I guess I'll ask if there are any public comment regarding this item. And I don't see any. So Ms. Dodson, do you have any?
Do not have any public comment on this item. If a member of the public wishes to speak, they'll need to raise their hand and I will get them into the meeting.
Okay, so let's open the item for discussion, please. Is there anything that anyone would like to offer in discussion? Ted?
I'd like to ask Pam what feedback, if any, she's been getting regarding people's ability to pay? And if there are any unusual issues that have cropped up in the last couple of months since we discussed this issue first?
Sure, good morning, everyone. So just to clarify, we did not postpone the rates for one quarter. We just did it for one billing cycle, which is just a two-month period. So instead of them going into effect July 1st, they will go into effect September 1st. Just to clarify that call.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, so we got a lot of payments this past weekend because as you are probably aware, our next bill due date is August 10th. So Mariam got all those processed yesterday and we just worked this morning to get all those payments recorded everywhere. And we have our payment plan master updated. So currently, where we stand for the January and February billing cycle, we still have 11 customers that are late in that late status that are unpaid. And that's a total of roughly $1,400. And we have no active payment plans for that billing cycle. Everybody that was on a payment plan either paid or defaulted. Anybody that defaulted would go back into that late category. For the March and April billing cycle, we have 46 customers that are still in the late status and that totals like $13,300. And we have in addition to that, we have 19 active payment plans, which total $10,400. For the May-June billing cycle, which those are the bills that we just sent out on July 10th, we have had five customers reach out to us because they had high bills and they are on a payment plan. So we have five active payment plans for May-June and that totals $2,600. So in total, our late customers stand at 63 and that's a dollar value of $15,500. Our payment plans stand at 24 and that's a total of around $13,100. So you know, our you know, our payments are getting made. They may be a little bit delayed, but we are continuing to work with customers and you know, extend payment plans to them, put them on a payment plan and work with them to get through this situation.
So it seems like the you know, as a percentage of customer base, late and payment plan, et cetera, is about 2%. Is that correct?
It's very small. Yeah, because we have 4,034 customers. And overall, our overall billing data for the May-June billing cycle, our consumption was down, but our revenue stream was back up to a more normal range than we're used to seeing. If you look at our actual usage for May-June of 2019, we had 39,000 units used. And in May-June 2020, we billed 36,000 of units used. So you know, it's not a huge difference off, but you know, it's still down a little bit as compared to the same billing cycle from last calendar year, the last fiscal year.
That's down about 7%.
Having all of that information available to us immediately, Pam. It's very helpful in getting a relationship of what's going on and what potential issues there are for the community.
So for the late customers, billing cycles and the payment plans, I was asked by the board to incorporate that into, I think it's going to go on the pandemic staff report. So every time the board meets at a regular special meeting, there is, you know, a pandemic update and a resolution associated. So I'll be incorporating any updated information we have into that staff report. So it's front and center and transparent to everybody, you know, at all times. So you'll see that as a change on the first August meeting.
Excellent.
Cheryl?
Can I ask Pam a question, please? January and February, you indicated 11 customers late. Are those residential? Are they renters? Are they retail? Can you elaborate?
I don't have that data readily available.
So that rolled over, those 11 rolled over into March and April?
No, we separate them out.
Okay.
We've segregated them. We try to keep it separated so that we have an idea. You know, if we let it roll together, then we never really know, you know, where we're at in each billing cycle. So our reporting allows us to segregate, you know, past 30 days, past 60 days, past 120 days.
A suggestion, there's an answering machine, I guess, going on or a message being left. So if we put our mute ourselves, hopefully that won't come through for the rest of the group.
Might be an attendee, maybe. I don't know. Looks like everybody's on mute.
Not me.
Okay. Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt anything. So are there any other questions or requests that any of the committee members have regarding this?
So I take it that the
Yes.
Question from Pam.
I would Marvin, just a second. Dwayne was just speaking. Thank you.
All right, I didn't mean to.
I take it then that this, the increase will automatically go into effect as planned and as voted on. And I'm kind of curious as to, you know, is it on our agenda for a reason? Are we relooking at this? Or the possibility of delaying it again? These figures that Pam stated were, are mostly, you know, pre-pandemic. And, you know, I think the community, as far as the ability to maybe pay, just started to get into the part that a lot of them are going to be affected. Those that were laid off, furloughed, whatever. And that doesn't seem to be changing. It seems to be the pandemic is not getting any better. If nothing else, here in Cambria, we're even getting more active cases every day, it seems like. So I'd just like a clarification on what action do you want from the committee?
The, it wasn't so much an action as it was a target that we had set for ourselves to have the conversation. My assumption would have been if there was a significant enough impression by the committee members that they felt that they would like to make a recommendation to the board that we could put together a motion and do something along those lines. But my expectation in the way that it was left from the prior meeting was that we would just have the conversation to orient ourselves. And if for some reason we felt strongly about it, that we would take a motion to the board, excuse me, take a recommendation to the board.
I'd like to do that.
How would you like to have the, how would you like to have the motion?
Resent it possibly and to bring it back for 2021 for rates to maybe go into effect after this is quiet down a little bit. And I'd like to revisit it. I don't, I don't think this is a good time to raise rates. I'm a firm believer on that, Cindy, and that's my position.
You're welcome to have that position. I just want to know what you'd like to have the motion say.
I would like it to state that this gets put on hold, that the rate increase gets put on hold till 2021 and revisit. It will never go away. I mean, we voted for a rate increase. It's just a matter of when to implement it. So implementing it now for September 1st, I don't think that's a good call. That's my personal opinion.
Can I hear a second?
Question before we do that. Could I, Pam? The budget that we're about to review, that was based on the rate increase going into effect in September? The numbers on this budget?
Yes, you're correct.
So if we postpone or defer the rate increase, then we've got to go back and redo the whole budget.
That's correct. And the board would need to support your recommendation as well.
That's a matter of clicking buttons.
No, it's a matter of a lot of analysis because staff would have to go back to the drawing board and determine what capital, I mean, it's going to relate to capital projects in totality unless we go to staffing. So it's not a matter of clicking buttons. It's a laborious effort to have those discussions and to repackage it and take those recommendations to the board. And then it's a manual update of all the spreadsheets and all of our documents. So it is not a five-minute exercise by any way, shape or form.
Again, if I recall, we had sort of a guesstimate of what the dollar amount of increases for the average consumer in Cambria would be. Do you recall offhand what that number was?
No, but I can grab it if you want me to grab it back out.
Oh, I think that would be helpful if we, if we know what dollars we're talking about. What kind of burden is that going to put on the vast majority of people? Now, some, right, and I certainly agree with Cheryl. Some people are going to be struggling, but the vast majority of residents in Cambria are probably economically able to support this without a major, major problem.
With the school, it's not many different things. I just think it's going to be more of a hardship on families.
Mary?
Just a comment. I tend to agree with, I tend to agree with Marvin. I think, you know, the data shows, because those numbers did happen during the pandemic, the late fees and such. And it, again, families are terribly affected and I recognize that. But I also recognize that I think the vast majority of Cambrians, and if I recall, it's a small dollar increase to the rates we're talking about. I think the vast majority of Cambrians can absorb it. And, you know, it's not easy for anybody. But I think that the less than 2% people, if we want to make special accommodations for, which I think we already are, but that would be my take.
Also, we have late fees blocked. Customers are not receiving late fees and they're not having their water shut off. So what they owe is truly just the cost of the services that they utilize. It does not include any late fees.
Thank you for that information, Pam. Dwayne?
Have we had any applications for the lower rate assistance that I think the board provided earlier? Or, you know, people of under a certain income or whatever are eligible for lower rates? Has there been any applications in that area?
We get low-income applications all the time. Once a year, we update those applications and make sure that they're still meeting that criteria. We do that in May chair. We send out a letter. We ask them to update their application and provide their updated PG&E bill, which documents that they are part of the care program with PG&E. We also provide that information to every single new customer. As a person starts new service with us, we provide that information to them routinely so that they're aware of that program. So, you know, we're getting, not just once a year, do we get those updates? But we get customers on a regular basis that go on and off that program as they start new service or move into the community with a new home, those kinds of things. So where we have active, I think we have around 130 customers that are partaking in that program currently.
But have we seen any increase in the last two or three billing cycles since the pandemic yet?
I don't have that data comparison.
I think these are going to be the ones that are hardest as far as being affected by this rate increase. I'll agree with Marvin. I think the majority of the population can afford this as long, you know, so as long as we have a program in place to take care of people that need the help, that's reassuring.
We do, and we still encourage them to call us, you know, to get set up on a payment plan. We're still actively doing that for customers as there's a need.
So I guess I'll ask again, is there a second for the motion that Cheryl proposed? I don't hear a second for the motion.
Could the motion be restated?
Dwayne, would you like to restate the motion?
Please.
Oh, that Cheryl had made. I thought you were asking.
You don't want it from my notes.
I, unless either Mary or Haley want to address that, I can just state that it was a recommendation to the board to not implement the the rate structure of 2021 until 2122. Basically, she was asking that it push out to next year.
Okay.
So I guess, does my observation of no second still stand?
Well, I would second that. And I really think that it should be relooked at because I don't think we've seen the hardest part of the pandemic yet. Yet, and I think it should still be addressed rather than discussed. I think we should discuss it. If the board wants to go ahead and implement it, they would have no action from this. So I'll second the motion.
Okay. I would ask then either Mary or Haley, if you have the wording for the motion, if you could read that to Pam?
So remember, this is agendaized as discussion.
Thank you.
I don't know if you can actually take a motion at this point other than to put it on a future agenda. It was just supposed to be a discussion. It doesn't look like it's actionable.
It wasn't consideration. You're right. Thank you.
That's true. That was the reason for my first question regarding, you know, what are we doing readdressing this? So that's true. It is on there as a discussion, so we really don't have any way of taking action on.
My, yeah, my error to move it to motion then, and I apologize. So is there any additional discussion that anyone has to offer?
I do have one member of the public that wishes to speak. Do you want to take public comment at this time?
Actually, Ted had his hand up to speak, so I'd like to do that first.
Okay.
Ted, you'll need to unmute yourself. Yeah, thank you.
I just, I just wanted to say that the counterbalance, and we haven't, we haven't heard anything about this except tangentially and what Pam said, is that the progress towards the upgrades, maintenance, repairs, et cetera, would be harmed. It wouldn't go away entirely, but it would be harmed. And one of the things that we have to balance in our thoughts about impact on the community is not only the financial impact of paying for the services, but the impact of delayed you know, maintenance. We have, we have years of deferred maintenance and the problem with delaying rate increases just exacerbates the problem that we have in terms of the ability to provide service. And so, you know, that's, that's an important consideration and we shouldn't lose sight of it.
Thank you. And Haley, you indicated the member of public?
Yes, Tina Dickinson would like to speak on this item. Tina, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yes, good morning, Finance Committee. Pam, I heard Pam mention earlier that the water usage was down. Was that correct, Pam, from last year to this year? You cited some numbers a while back indicating that we were using less water this year than last year. You compared 2020, May-June figures. Is that correct, Pam? Hello? Are you hearing me?
Pam, thank you.
This is, is this a public comment? What is this?
No, I need to know.
Coming in a conversation.
Pam, I need to know what the numbers were that you cited. You said May-June of last year compared. What my point is this, the production for May-June of this year was over the production of May-June of last year. Now, while usage may be different, maybe there was a difference in leakage or whatever, but we've actually produced more water this year in May and June than we did last year. Even though we've had motels closed, stores closed, restaurants closed, I don't understand that. And so I'd like, I think we need to dig into those figures.
Ms. Dickinson, this, what you're referring to in terms of production is not something that the committee's looking at right now.
Well, why was Pam mentioning those numbers then earlier? That's why I asked her exactly. She mentioned the numbers for May-June at last year and this year.
Ms. Dickinson, what she was discussing was in reference to the billing levels, which talks to consumption, not necessarily production. So we're talking about apples and oranges here, so.
Not really. We need to dig into it further. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Ms. Dickinson. Any other comments? Okay, fine. With that being said, then I'd like to move on to the second regular business item, which is discussion and consideration of the final budget for FY 2021 and to approve recommendations to the Board of Director, should we have any. So I'd like to open that up for discussion. And Ms. Duffield, would you please take us through the budget?
Okay. So back in June, the board reviewed the preliminary budget on June 18th and they did make a recommendation to make a change. So what you're going to see in the draft of the final budget includes that recommended change. And also, you're going to see a closer recap of how fiscal year 1920 ended. So if we start with just the overall fund summary or the general fund, which that is on page 10 of your packet, that gives you a recap of where the year has ended and what we're going to increase reserves by. So basically, $177,920 will go additionally into reserves at the end of 2019, 2020. That number is going to be increased a slight bit because we just received our final property tax allocation, which I did not have that information when I prepared this. So when this goes to the board, I will include that. It's about $54,000 additional that will go into the general fund. So, you know, we, because of the pandemic event, the county was trying to get all the true-ups done by the end of July and they were successful in doing that. We just didn't have it at the time of this publication. So we have received our final allocation of property taxes for 1920. Moving into the 2021 fiscal year for the general fund budget, there were no changes to fire facilities or PROs, other than the updated administrative allocation that changed. So when the board disapproved increasing the clerical assistant position in administration from part-time to full-time, that required a reduction in the administrative salary budget. So I made that reduction, and then that in turn made the admin allocation change across every single department. It wasn't a huge change, but it was a change, and it did lower the admin allocation to all the associated funds and departments. So those are the only changes you will see for fire facilities and PROs, and again, the change in administration.
Pam, can I just ask a simple question? On the reserve portion of all of these schedules, would it be possible to carry forward for continuity, just to say ending reserve in 2019, 2020 would show as a beginning reserve in the 2021? It just would help me follow it a little closer if that's not too much trouble.
No, it is. It's a lot of work to do that when the financials are unaudited. So, you know, moving forward, maybe during the second quarter report, we can get those updated once we get through, you know, the 1819 audit and those numbers are finalized. But I have a recap at the very end of the packet that fine tunes the balances for you. It's just they were, you know, they're kind of representing different things, and there's other things that go into the reserves. So I can work on that, but it's not included in this document.
Thank you.
So moving forward to the general fund, or sorry, out of the general fund into the enterprise fund as a whole. That begins on page... That begins on page 43. You'll see the recap of where we ended up the year in water, SWF and SWF capital. So that is in column I is kind of what we're looking at, because that's our 1920 here. So for water, we ended up with a surplus. For SWF operations, we also have a surplus. For capital, we have a deficit, and for wastewater, we have a surplus. Keep in mind, a lot of the surpluses are coming forward as a reserve for encumbrance because these relate to multi-year capital projects or encumbered contracts that are currently in place for services. So as you look through the actual detailed pages, like if we look at water, for example, let's see what page it's on for you. So if you look at the water fund.
What page are we talking about?
So if you look at the water fund, you will see, that's on page 51, you will see that we're reserving some encumbrances to move forward. We're reserving a large number of encumbrances to carry forward. So it looks like water has a lot of surplus, because if you look above on line 218, you see that they have 948,000 in surplus. But then, when you have to offset it by all the projects and encumbrances that need to carry forward, it's not such a large number. In total, it is still a surplus. But, you know, some of those funds need to get carried forward to the new budget year to carry those projects forward. And you're going to see that throughout. The same holds true with, I think, in SWF operations. I don't believe there was anything to carry forward. But then you'll see several projects in wastewater also were not completed and carry forward.
Can I ask a really stupid question, please?
What's your question, Cheryl?
Why is the SWF the only one that has a capital? Why don't the other accounts?
So the reason that SWF has a separate fund is because it was the construction fund. And until all those monies are utilized, because there's extra monies that were left over from construction, will that fund be closed? So that fund will continue. That was strictly for construction, to record all the grant and loan, and record the expenses of building the system.
So is that considered a separate enterprise fund or not?
No, it is just a separate fund.
Okay.
That's a common way to manage a large capital project like this. It's common in the industry to do that, to have a construction fund, and once it's completed, the fund is closed. Otherwise, you see, like within wastewater or water fund, the capital improvements or the capital outlay are inclusive of the budget. It's not a separate fund.
Correct. Thank you very much.
So I also want to note for SWF, which is on page 58, which this is the total page for SWF Department, or Fund 39, Department 25, that the two months of operational reserves were not utilized in fiscal year 1920. So to be transparent and show that these were unused and they're carrying forward, we decided to list it on two separate lines so that it was a little more transparent. So you see the 1920 operational reserve, and then you see the carry forward of the 1920. If I just had it in one lump sum, it becomes a little less transparent. So at least it keeps it out here, because people kind of remember that 173,000 number from 1920. And then the new number, which is augmented by a 4% increase, is out there for 2021. So doing that, it does put the fund in a little bit of a deficit in the new, in the final budget. But hopefully, there will be other savings in other areas, and maybe at the end of the year, it won't end up in a deficit state. Moving to the wastewater fund, looking at page 54, wastewater ended with a surplus, and that surplus did include a little bit of encumbrances that have to carry forward in some capital projects. It's mainly the lift station project that needs to carry forward. We were unable to carry forward that entire amount of the lift station. We didn't have sufficient budget to do that. So we carried forward what we could to keep the budgets between 1920 actual and 2021 final budget to balance to zero. Because if you notice, fiscal year 1920 has a 387,000, or sorry, fiscal year 2021 has a $387,000 deficit. So our goal was to use anything that was surplus from 1920 and utilize that to balance the deficit in 2021.
So wastewater, and in 2021 budget, we're managing it to a zero net reserve?
That's correct. So we're utilizing every bit of rates that come in to manage our staffing and our operations and maintenance and our capital projects. The one variable in wastewater that's still unknown is on the capital outlay section, there's a large budget for the design, the remainder of the design that's due for the PG&E IGA project. It's around $500,000, a little over $500,000. So that is still undetermined at this point, if we will have to cash pay that, or if that will be wrapped into the loan. That decision will come at a later date. So if the decision is made that that becomes part of our debt service, that money does become available to put into reserves, or it could be used for another project.
Perhaps I'm jumping ahead a little bit, but we're still showing a interfund loan principal payment of $96,000 and an interest of $5,000. So 100 grand in interfund loan payments, when we've got a zero ending reserve. I would suggest that maybe we defer that $100,000 payment so that we don't use up every penny of money in wastewater. Thoughts?
We budgeted the loan as per the debt schedule that the board adopted back in August, I believe, of 2018. The board adopted that debt schedule.
Right, but they've deferred it twice already, I think, so.
Well, we didn't completely defer it. So back in 1819, wastewater ended a deficit and had to borrow additional monies from the general fund. And you'll see that on the reserve worksheet, the additional funding that they needed. And then in 1920, we basically just paid interest. So that is what the board requested during the final budget. This is the first year that actual principal is supposed to be paid back to the general fund. So that's what is put into the budget. And that was the same as what was in the preliminary budget that the board had previously approved back in June. Also in your packet, after all the worksheets, on page 73, just for your information, is there's been no changes. It's just the CIP, the color-coded worksheet, to show what is in the budget and what's been in the past budget, and just the project status for all the capital improvement projects in the wastewater fund, in the water fund, and in SWF. On a side note, we are trying to come up with a similar document for the general fund. Staff's going to be working with RNI to create a list similar to this for the general fund, which will include projects, cost estimates, project cost estimates, and also a priority list. So we are actively working on that, and hopefully, we'll be able to produce that document sometime in the fall or early winter, is our goal. So that's been included for you. Moving to page 77, just because there was a change that we made in administration related to the clerical assistant, I would have had and included this for the committee's review, just to show that this document changed. And I made that note there, why we made the change. It's down about halfway down the page. And then the very last page of the packet is the updated reserve worksheet. So the last worksheet that your committee saw included projected numbers for how we were going to end fiscal year 1920. And so the worksheet that you're looking at today includes how the year ended. Like I said, with the exception of that little bit of property tax revenue that's not reflected, that'll be updated, and this'll be amended a slight bit. It also includes any encumbrances or any contracts that are currently in place that roll from year to year that were not complete, and any projects that are multi-year that were not completed on June 30. So those numbers that you see there in the 1920 include the actual, and then all those other items. Also, our final budget has been revised slightly. The general fund was reduced, and then accordingly, all the other funds were slightly reduced as well. And so you have the recap on line 27 of what our estimated reserves are. And then the following few lines are related to the interfund loans. So Marvin, there you see the interfund loan for wastewater sits at $584,000. And remember, that's an audit that includes all the audited financials through fiscal year 1718. It does not include any thing that they would need for 1819. The audit should be starting for that next week. So also included down in this area is also your reserves for the two-month reserve for SWF. So those are to the far right column. You see that reflected in column J. You see the notation again for the unused reserve from 1820, and then the new reserve for 2021. You do see those numbers consolidated there, just so I can keep this on a single page. So, available for questions?
Just to clarify, in the case of the loan repayment, and it's recorded at the $96,000 on the cash page, the page 80, that is, of course, just the principal. The interest remains within the administrative department, and it's only the principal value that's returned to the general fund as that's the amount, in essence, that was actually loaned. So any, there is no accompanying interest that gets repaid to the general fund. Is that a true statement?
No, the interest is in the general fund. So it's all recorded through administration because we don't, yeah, we don't have a non-departmental fund to record it. So the only place we can record such an interfund transaction would be the administrative fund.
Okay. Ted, I'm sorry. I was looking down at my paper.
No problem. I just raised my hand. This is a really ticky little thing. And unfortunately, it's because it's such a ticky little department, that the idea that the administrative allocation to PROs is greater than the spending in PROs just is optically very difficult to live with. Is there any way you can put a manual override on that and just, and not necessarily for this budget cycle, but it's dysfunctional to think that the administrative allocation sucks up more than half of what's allocated as revenue for the department.
So that's a good discussion for the, I think, I don't know what budget meeting or what finance committee meeting we're supposed to have that we're going to talk about, the reserve policy and the budget policy. But I think our admin allocations is part of our budget policies. But I think our admin allocations is part of our budget policies. So if there's desire to change that methodology, you know, we need to do that outside the budget cycle. I think that's a future meeting topic at some point in time.
It is.
I think so, like in the fall, we were going to talk about the the budget policy. So that's probably a good time to revisit, you know, the whole concept of administrative allocation, what gets included, what doesn't get included. You know, it's probably a good time to revisit that. And then if, you know, recommendation is made by your committee, that could go to the board. And if the board decides to make that kind of a change, then we could implement implement that in the following fiscal year.
Had a question along similar lines, looking on the page 41 where done a real good job of separating out all of the costs for the administrative overhead. And for the SWF operating in capital, those two are broken out at 309,298 and 103,099, but they're not allocated in the proposed budget. Isn't there some way that that can be merged in so that the proposed budget would reflect those amounts and be a lot easier to follow?
They are, they are allocated, they're allocated in the water fund.
Yes, I'm asking why it can't be allocated to you. We've got it broken down. Why isn't that broken down as well in the budget?
It is broken down in the budget. If you look, let me look to the page.
No, I saw that. I'm with you there. It's just not broken down into the whenever we're looking at the SWF cost. If we're going to have that in the budget separate, it looks like that should is where it needs to be rather than all in in the in the water department.
So when the rates were developed and the Prop 218 study was adopted by the board in October of 2018, the rate structure for SWF did not include administrative overhead. All of the administrative overhead for SWF and water got put into water and it's part of the water rate structure. It's not part of SWF.
But that, I think it should be changed so that it is.
Then then the fund will be in a deficit every single year because the rates do not accommodate administrative overhead. So if you go back and look at scenario B of the Bartles and Wells study, you will see how the rates were put into place. And we've been trying to keep those things aligned so we can determine if we're meeting our commitments, if our rates are meeting our operational needs. So if you start putting things in that aren't a component of the rate structure, then it's going to put that fund in a deficit.
The the other thing to keep in mind is that the the board made a decision to align the budgetary process as closely as possible to the Prop 218 so that we were in a position of being able to have visibility between our budgeting process and how we were managing ourselves financially against what the public had approved in Prop 218. So if you if we would choose to start going off of that decision process, make a different decision, then we in essence would be removing ourselves in traceability between what was approved in the Prop 218 and how we're handling our budgetary process and our financial recording. So it's it's you may not care for what it is, but the the issue is that the Prop 218 alignment had that allocation within the water department. And you can go and look at the rate details. I've gone and done that and verified that. And so with the board's decision to align the budgetary process in the Prop 218, the budget is following what all of those decision processes have been and the choices that have been made.
I also made a line item note within SWF operations, SWF capital and the water fund to talk about administrative cost allocation, see the water fund beginning fiscal year 2019, 2020. So that is on page, what number is that, 61, which is the SWF. So there's notes back and forth between the funds to remind us that, you know, we made a change to our overhead allocation and who got charged for it. So we made that change in the 1920 budget and we're following suit with that in 2021. When you look at the water fund, you will see three separate lines for administrative cost allocation and that'll be the water fund line, it'll be SWF operations and SWF capital. You'll see them out separately line by line and then you'll see the grand total.
And Ted, you had a question?
Well, I'll just comment that this same question has come up every time we've addressed the budget over the last two years. And part of the reasoning behind the allocations all going to the water department is that the unit charges, when somebody buys a unit of water, that is just a fee that comes out of the water department. And there is no separate fee for units of water coming that are produced by the SWF. And so the it's it's kind of an awkward situation because we have the component funds for SWF set up to identify the capital and the operations in SWF. But when it comes to production of water, a unit of water is a unit of water is a unit of water and it doesn't matter where it came from. And so that was, I think, the Bartles and Wells logic that went into the rates in 2018. And it's it's now a legacy that it's, it feels awkward, but all the dollars are going somewhere and and they're and basically in some senses, we have to think about the water fund as a single fund rather than the the three components.
Are there any other questions that anyone has as far as the the budget that Pam has led us through?
No, I'd one last comment on that. I think that will continue to be a confusing concept that will have to be addressed every year.
It's entirely possible.
It, we had three funds until we had two funds and that that's where the confusion goes and that that's not going to change going on from year to year. We may change. The question will still continue to come up. It will have to be explained. Sorry, Pam, but.
One final question. I'm sorry, I'm sounding like a broken record, but this this payment on the interfund loan out of wastewater still bugs me. Now, it's not significant enough to to try to change it here, but we did have a future agenda item to review all interfund loan and the situation. So so theoretically, if 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 we approve the budget or the board approves the budget with that in there and then at the future meeting decides to defer it, they can do that. We're not going to transfer the money tomorrow, right?
Correct. So how we've been handling it is we've been evaluating the status of the wastewater fund at each quarterly report. And then, you know, like by the time we get through the third quarter, we're going to have a pretty good idea of where the fund stands. Are they projected to be in a deficit? If they're going to project to be in a deficit, then the discussion in the past has been, well, only transfer, only pay interest or pay a little bit of interest and a little bit of principal. I mean, there's all kinds of options that the board will provide to staff if it gets to that situation. So we continually evaluate it and we don't make an actual transfer until the end of the fiscal year when we know the actual state of the fund. Additionally, we still have this topic as a whole to review with the board. Like a year ago, we were waiting until we got all the audits caught up through 19, well, pretty much through 1819 because 1920 there, the wastewater fund is pretty, you know, it's showing a surplus versus a deficit. So I think we were waiting until the audits were caught up. And then we were going to have a further discussion with the board just to review the history of the wastewater, what's been loaned, you know, what's been paid back, kind of where it stands. And then the other part of that is we need to put a loan on the books for the water fund because if you recall, that was never memorialized that I have found by the board. So, you know, we do need to do some analysis of the interfund loans and some decisions need to be made on the payback. You know, is interest going to be waived? Interest going to be collected? I mean, there's a lot of discussions still to be had on the interfund loans overall in water and wastewater. So hopefully that will happen in the near future. How near I don't know, but hopefully in 2021, we can have that discussion.
Have one other question. If I may, Pam, looking on page 54. I'm a little confused on the revenue area of SWF. Where we are showing the income. Lost my page. Okay. Never mind.
You're probably just curious why we're showing a deficit. And that's just because of the postponing of the rate increase by a billing cycle.
Oh, okay.
The past budget, when we first came up with these worksheets in 1920, we aligned the rates to not have any any differences, any surplus or any deficit. But because of postponing the rates in all the funds, you're going to see in water, wastewater and SWF, you will see a little bit of a deficit based on those decisions.
Okay. Unless there's some other questions from the committee members, I do see that there are questions from attendees and I just want to acknowledge that I realize that those are there. But I guess Cheryl, did you have a question?
I do. It's it's a lot of the account numbers have had zero activity. Do you have to always display the account numbers? I mean, if for the last three years, let's say there's been zero activity, but you still itemize the account numbers. Do the, is that something that can be, I mean, even though it's been assigned to an account, do you have to show those account with zeros? I mean, it's really, I was just.
The reason they're on there is because, remember, we're hiding, we have a couple of years that you don't see in the printouts. So they probably had activity a couple of years ago, but that'll be something that I look at when I do the the published first quarter report. I'll go back and hide those lines if it's zeros for the reporting period that we're looking at.
Thank you.
Okay, Haley, I see two attendees who have raised their hands. Could you introduce either of those first?
Yes, the first member of the public that wishes to speak is Tina Dickinson. Tina, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you, Haley. So going back to what some of you were referring to, especially, I think, Ted, with the three, the rate increase in July, I mean, yeah, it came out in July of 2018, was for three enterprise funds. When the hearing took place, the then president, Director Pearson now decided, seems like almost on his own, that the SWF was going to then be included in the water fund. How is it possible that we, the rate payers, can be charged for the SWF, EWS, whatever, if we're not receiving a single drop of water from that facility? That has that has been a real problem for myself, but also when that occurred, there was no real discussion.
Could you direct that question to the board when the board meets? This committee cannot.
You're talking about it today. Ted has raised it. I am raising it in the finance committee. This was already raised, Director Stidell. This was already raised. And so I, this is critical. Look what you're doing with the funds. Look at the, look at the mess that it is creating. And so absolutely it belongs in this committee meeting for a comment. You cannot take away my time again like you tried at the last meeting. I have a right to speak and whether you agree or disagree with me, I have the right to say what I'm saying, as did committee member, Mr. Ziegler. So I'm telling you right now that this is a boondoggle of a problem. And as Mr. Ziegler said, that this, this is a legacy that's going to, you know, fall with with the district. It could have been taken up. It could be actually something that should have gone to Howard Jarvis because this never should have happened in the first place.
Thank you, Dickinson. We do not have the authority to address that for you.
Haley? The next member of the public that wishes to speak is Elizabeth Benhausen. Elizabeth, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you, Vice President Stidell. I am really glad for this opportunity to give my hearty thanks to Ms. Duffield. I have never until today understood really what transfer and encumbrance might entail in this budget. I never took an accounting class, so I am ignorant to perfection. So I want to thank you, Ms. Duffield, for that explanation today. I also thank you very much for what you just said about the need for the discussion of interfund loans and water because I noticed that large gray blank on page 80 or whichever page it was back there when you talked about that. And I urge this committee to put it on a future agenda along with your rediscussion of administrative cost allocations, which you've mentioned, thank you, Mr. Ziegler, frequently, but it never comes up on an agenda so of your committee. So I would hope that you would not wait for the board to instruct you to take it up, but you might audaciously do something on your own in that regard. I also thank you, Vice President Stidell, because you mentioned that you had done the research on Bartle and Wells and I clearly have missed over the years. and I clearly have missed over the years this whole question of how Bartle and Wells determined that the administrative cost allocation for SWF would be in the water fund only in eleven. And so I would request you kindly, and I'll do it by email as well, that you forward to me what you found on pages in Bartle and Wells, which helped you understand that, about where that cost allocation would be looked at in terms of where the rate increases would be. Because I did not know until today that the SWF rate increases did not include the administrative cost allocation, and I thank you very much for clarifying that for me today. I do have one question, probably I have more, but I don't have time. I sent you an email far too late this morning, but my first question referred to page fifty-four of your agenda, and I want to ask it here. Why is the only revenue listed for SWF, both thirty-nine, twenty-five, and forty-thirty funds, from residential rates? Where are the commercial rates of revenues listed for this project? Thank you.
So Ms. Duffield, could you address the last portion of Ms. Benhausen's question as far as commercial rate information versus residential?
It's just an incorrect title. When we did the, if you look back to fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, and seventeen, eighteen, all of these things were detailed in all the different categories. So when we did the nineteen, twenty budget, we elected to just put all the use, all the base charges, or any customer type on that first line, and then any usage charges on the next line. So I can just correct the titles.
Thank you. Okay, I do not see any other questions from the attendees being indicated. And Haley, is there anything, as far as any written questions, that haven't been addressed?
No, I have no public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions that committee members have? Questions, observations? Ted?
I move that we recommend the final budget to the board.
Do I hear a second? Second, and a second by Mary. All right. All voting aye, please raise your hands. That's three. And nays?
I thought this was a discussion.
So, okay, so that there. Are you?
I had one.
Let me say, if you look at the, if you look at the agenda item, Cheryl, it says, "Discussion and consideration," which means that there's a vote. So, and.
Excuse my ignorance.
Okay, so there are no nays? Is that what I'm seeing? Okay. So what is the position that you want to take as far as the votes concerned? Cheryl and Duane?
Go ahead.
Before I, before I vote, I'd like to get one clarification.
All right.
And again, looking over this, and I apologize for not bringing this up before it come to a vote. But I noticed that in looking at the wages, I was under wages and salaries. I was under the impression that those had pretty well been frozen for, and in looking at this, this time, I noticed that there is quite a bit of increase in wages and salaries. And I was wondering if that was overall, or if it was individualized as to, you know, who was getting raises and who wasn't, or if everybody is, or if it's built in. I know some is built in as far as the union. Those that are under that. But if you could just bring us up to, before I could vote to accept this, I'd just like to get a clarification on the wages and salaries. We've got about a $412,000 increase in this area, and if we could have an explanation on that.
Would you like me to answer the question?
Yeah.
Okay. So for this, for the salaries overall, so we had a little bit of this discussion during the preliminary budget, but I'll try to remember as best that I can all the changes that we made. So during the nineteen, twenty fiscal year, the SEI Union Group, SEIU Union Group, which is our administrative staff and our water, wastewater, and facility workers, came to an agreement, and they have a five-year revised contract. That did include salary increases within those five years. And then the same holds true for the IAFF, which is the firefighters' union. They also adopted a five-year MOU. And so all of those salary increases that happened in nineteen, twenty, the next round of increases per those two MOUs happens in January of 2021. So those are included as part of the budget. We put those calculations in there. Additionally, we had a position that was reclassified. So we reclassified the management analyst, and we reclassified that position as a program manager. So that created a budget change. Also in nineteen, twenty, we had a little bit of a consolidation of positions. So we had a water plant supervisor, water operations supervisor, an SWF chief plant operator, and a wastewater supervisor, operations supervisor. Two, the water in the SWF were consolidated into one position, and that new position is the water superintendent, water system superintendent, I think is official title. And the same holds true with wastewater. So wastewater also had a position change. The other items that changed, we're projecting, though we don't have those figures as of yet, but we're assuming about a seventeen percent increase in medical contributions on behalf of the district. So currently, the district provides eighty-five percent of the lowest cost premium to all employees that enroll in health benefits. So we're assuming the trend is about that every year, but we actually don't have those numbers from CalPERS yet. We are expecting them at any time, but we don't have them as of today. So those were the things that we programmed into the budget. But you also have to remember, when you're looking at the proposed budget versus what actually happened in fiscal year nineteen, twenty, you're looking at actual. And if you just kind of recount the history of what happened in nineteen, twenty, for wastewater, it might look like there's a significant increase in salaries if you're looking at actuals versus what we're budgeting. Because in the actuals for nineteen, twenty, wastewater had two positions that were budgeted on July first of 2019. But those positions had to be, the position description had to be developed. It had to go to meet and confer with the unions. And then we had to recruit for those positions. So those two individuals didn't really come on board and are not reflective of a cost in the actuals until approximately April. So for those two positions, you're only really seeing a couple of months of their salaries reflected. You're not seeing a full year. The budget budgets for an entire year for those positions. So you are gonna see a variance in that situation. The other thing that varied in a lot of the enterprise funds was the hiring of the district engineer, utilities manager. So that was also in the budget for one year, but the person was not hired until the beginning of January. So you're only really seeing in the actuals, six months of activity reflected for that individual. You're not seeing a full year. So I just kind of want you to keep that in mind when you're thinking the salaries are so much higher. You've got to keep in mind it's actuals versus a whole year's budget. And we're gonna have those variables as, you know, people come and go throughout the district.
Thank you very much, Pam, for that explanation. That makes it a lot clearer.
Pam?
Yes?
Is there two engineers on the payroll, two district engineers on the payroll?
There is not two district. We have, it was formerly titled District Engineer.
Yes.
And that was the retired individual, Mr. Gressen.
Yes.
And when he vacated the position, the position was changed a little bit, and the title was reclassified as a utility manager slash district engineer, and that is currently Mr. D'Enzo. You do see retired annuitant on our salary schedule, and that is in case we need Mr. Gressen to come out of retirement and do any work, because he is our expert witness on a couple of legal actions that we have.
So he's not involved now. He's not involved otherwise?
Correct. Right. He's just on our books in case we need his expert testimony, or we need his historic knowledge on a particular project. We have to have him per CalPERS rule on our salary schedule in order to be able to utilize his services.
So he was involved with the CDP, though?
That's correct, when he was an employee, correct. And then he worked as a retired, he was involved when he was an employee. And if you recall, when he retired, an action was taken to the board to waive his six-month waiting and allow us to retain him as a retired employee. Because with CalPERS rules, once you retire, you're not allowed to work in a CalPERS system for six months. So we had to do a board resolution to waive that six-month waiting period and allow him to be available to the district.
Is he now considered a consultant?
No, he's considered a retired annuitant. If he was a consultant, he wouldn't be on our salary schedule. He would be budgeted in our professional services. But he would have to develop a company, and there's a lot of things that would be involved with that if he was hired on as a consultant.
Thank you, Pam.
Sure.
Okay, so we had taken a vote, but it wasn't consummated. So I would like to again call for the vote, and we had the motion, and we had a second on it already. But I will ask for the voting on the motion in terms of raising your hands in for aye. Okay. Thank you all very much. Okay, so the motion is passed with a five-zero vote. And we can move on to. So I, Haley, I'm not sure when Ms. Dickinson raised her hand.
He had her hand raised on the last item.
Okay, prior to the vote?
Yes. Would you like to take public comment again on this item? I know we already had it.
Yeah, I, as we've already had the vote and gone through it, and Ms. Dickinson's had the opportunity to speak during the time period of that, I guess we will, what we will do is just move forward on the, the next agenda item. So that is in regular business item C, which is Discussion, Consideration, and Recognition and Acknowledgements. And I will go ahead and address this item in that a while ago, there was a discussion that the Finance Committee had had about a letter of commendation for some work being done, for the work being done at the time through the initial budgetary process and so forth. We didn't, at that time, formalize it in terms of any kind of vote being taken by the committee members. So the intent of this is to act on that so that we can take it forward for formal commendation coming from the Finance Committee, and it is going to the Finance Group as a whole. The question I'd like to pose is, being in the situation that we are currently, this isn't as easy as taking things around and having each one of you sign it individually to take it forward. And an option to do that could be that myself and Vice, or the Vice Chair sign off on behalf of the committee for delivery of this commendation at an upcoming meeting in August. So I guess I'd like your feedback about what, what would be your preference in going forward with this? Any, okay, Mary?
I agree, agree with your approach. I think it's, you know, appropriate, given the environment, and I think they deserve the recognition.
Okay, fine. Okay. All right, then, I, there is a comment by a member of the public. Haley, could you please, before we take our vote, could you please?
Sure. The next member of the public that wishes to speak is Elizabeth Benhausen.
Yes, a quick question, Vice President Stidell. Who are you commending again?
The Finance, Finance Group as a whole.
Who, that's not Wall Street. Who, I mean, who is it?
Ms. Duffield and her Finance Group.
Oh, please put a huge red rose with pink blossoms on it so that the, for the community to assist in your commendation. Thank you.
Thank you. I readily agree. All right, Mr. Ziegler, are you available?
I had to take a quick break, but.
Oh, okay, sorry. I just, I was going to call for a vote, and so I just wanted to make sure that you, you were available. Thank you. So I would be willing to hear a motion about going forward with this.
I move that we go forward with the commendation to Ms. Duffield and her staff.
Thank you, Duane. And I hear a second?
Yes.
Oh, okay, Cheryl, thank you. And for a vote? All those in favor? Five-zero, thank you very much, six, okay. Thank you, Mr. Ziegler. And on the chance that you didn't get the specifics on that, you and I will be co-signors on the commendation going forward. So we are in a position then to move on for your agenda items. Any recommendation besides the obvious ones? Or including the obvious ones, sorry. Or including the obvious ones, sorry?
Yeah, we've talked about allocation, and we've talked about interfund loans. And with the interfund loans, loan not the policy as much as just the activity and trying to figure out where we stand. Although I think, you know, we really probably need to get through the 1920 audit before we can have a useful conversation about that.
Right, that was my understanding in, in prior information that Ms. Duffield had provided, that in particular, the Water Fund, we would not be in a position of addressing until the, the audit of the 1920, or the 1819 was completed. Is that still the case, Ms. Duffield?
Correct. I think we, we wanted to wait until the wastewater fund was a little more solid with the rates to really kick in, and hopeful they would end the year in a, in a surplus state. And then at that point, we would want to have the audit complete for those years, and then do a look back to see, you know, because hopefully at that point, the wastewater's solid and water's solid, and we're not having that loan situation that's going to keep occurring and amending information.
So on the face of it, it sounds like having a fruitful conversation about the interfund loan probably is something more as a target for the, the third quarter budget review, I think you had mentioned earlier.
Sure. I mean, we should have a good picture by that point. You know, what's happening with the fund, you know, we'll have more information every billing cycle regarding the COVID pandemic and how that's affecting our operations and our revenue streams. So that's probably a good point in time to have that discussion. And our audits will be caught up by then. They will.
Cindy?
Yes, Cheryl?
Can we put on the, next month, Ted and you guys are going to meet with the RNI regarding the CIPs? Can we, can we get a recap on that next month?
Certainly. It, it's also a Zoom meeting, so if people are interested in, in, and have an opportunity to call in on that, that is something also that they would have available. But I think that certainly Dwayne and Ted can provide some feedback on that, too.
I think, isn't that the, the purpose is to be able to bring information to, to our standing committees? And coming from the same base, so that both the RNI Committee and the Finance Committee get fundamentally the same picture.
Same information, right, at the same time.
Yeah, stay on the same page. And that, that will take place on Thursday of this week.
Correct.
So everyone's invited.
Come on now! The, the others that I kind of had on my checklist of things were the budget policy and the reserve policy. Which, just as a matter of getting to a point where we've gone through, through the full year and have just launched into a, a new budget policy, it's probably worth just going through and doing a Senate check in terms of how, how, what the practices actually are against the budget policy, or if there's any fine tuning that needs to be done, particularly with, with timing and time schedules that reside within the budget policy information.
Pam's chance to get back at us.
Go, girl!
Well, we have one adjustment that we, I think we need to make, is that we just need to update the language for our reporting. Because I think it was a mid-year, I think we haven't called out that we do a mid-year budget review, but we've, we've been operating the last fiscal year on a quarterly basis. I like that better. I think everybody, it's less time that passes, and everything, I think, is more current. So I think staying on that quarterly path is a, is a better option than just talking about it once a year.
I would agree with that.
Any other items people would like to put forward as far as future agenda items? All right. I believe we've finished our work for the day, ladies and gentlemen. So we'll actually be able to get out a little bit early. So thank you very much for your time and your questions, and for putting in the time ahead of our meeting today to go through and to familiarize yourselves with the budget that Ms. Duffield brought forward. So thank you.
Are you going to use the remaining 24 minutes as a transfer and encumbrance, so that it gets applied to the next meeting?
It's a thought. I, I don't know what kind of vote it would get, but it's a thought. Okay.
Sorry, at the next meeting, maybe we can talk about an update on Tyler a little bit.
Thank you.
That's, that's not on our agenda for today, but, but it'll be good to provide an update.
And probably an update on the...
The audit.
The audit, yeah.
Yes. So the auditor will be here on site next Monday and Tuesday to start the fieldwork. And then we have a lot of exciting things happening with Tyler, so.
Excellent. Okay. All right. I will then adjourn the meeting, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye.